Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 19th Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in closed session since 6:30 discussing employment of employee and approval of closed session minutes. We have seven board members present, none absent. And the next on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if we'd all stand.
(Applause) A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the best part of any school board meeting, student recognition. The first thing on our agenda is the Illinois Council on Economic Education Stock Market Game. Mr. Burrell, would you and your students please come on up? And Jim, do you have a few opening remarks explaining the perfect?
My name is Jim Burrell and I'm the Business Department Chair at York High School. We're very thankful and honored to be, I guess honored tonight for the stock market game that the kids play. We have, Stock Market Game is sponsored by the Illinois Council for Economic Education and every group, I kind of split my kids up, a class of 30 into 10 different teams. And so this particular team, they have $100,000 to invest. They can margin another $100,000, so there's actually $200,000 worth of investments said that they can do. And this particular team, over a three-month period, finished about $24,000 ahead of the $100,000. So just from an investing standpoint, they did a spectacular job. And what I thought I'd do, the game went basically from the second-to-last week in September through December 10th. And so I really give them no, well, I shouldn't say I give them no instruction. I give them no guidance as to what exact stocks to pick. I do kind of lead them to water a little bit. So one of the things I mentioned for the fall was there was a big election coming up and if, depending on who you thought was going to win the election, you know, if you thought the Republican side, you may want to go with defense stocks. If you thought that Mr. Obama was going to win, you may want to go with green energy stocks. And so they took it upon themselves to ask their parents which green energy stocks and which stocks would be a good ones to go with. Excuse me. And what I like to do is read off some of the investments that they made and how much money they made. Their big investment last fall was in First Solar. So they bought First Solar at $22.79 and by December 10th, that stock had risen to $31.77. So that investment alone made them $22,445, which was really a smart move on their part. You know, First Solar was kind of down a little bit and then when it looked like President Obama had a chance to win, then First Solar really took off. So that was a really spectacular move. They also made quite a bit, they made over $3,000 in research emotion, which is BlackBerry. And I don't know if you remember BlackBerry last fall was having some issues. And you know, that was another thing that we say, always look for stocks that, you know, are currently kind of having some issues and see if you think you're solid companies. And these kids did exactly that. So they bought 1,500 shares of RIM and they made over $3,200 just in the RIM shares alone. So there's about 15 stocks in their portfolio, 11 of which made money. Of course, they have some losers in there too, but you know, it's a great learning experience. All our Intro to Business kids play the stock market game and they should be really proud of their effort. To finish second out of 541 teams is just a great accomplishment and you know, to make $24,000 over that short period of time is awesome. And again, these kids did it all. It was all their decisions and they have a lot to be proud of. So thank you again for honoring us tonight and we appreciate it.
You know, just before I read this proclamation, just a couple of comments. This is a very closely related field to what I do for a living. And statistically, over time, 80 percent of all active money managers underperform the index that they're judged against. Now, the fact that these kids outperformed the S&amp;P 500 by 24 percent in a three-month period is by any standard extremely impressive. And Mr. Burrell, I've been on the Board for four years. This is the second time you've been up here with a winning team. That also is highly impressive. I spent my Monday morning, as many of us on the Board did over at York High School, participating in a science, engineering, technology, math event where we try to encourage our kids to pursue high-paying jobs. And I'll tell you guys, if you can outperform the S&amp;P 500 by 24 percent, that is a high-paying job that you will find. So with that said, the proclamation, whereas the Illinois Stock Market Game teaches and reinforces critical thinking, decision-making, cooperation and communication, independent research, as well as saving and investing. And whereas the game is a statewide competition run by the Illinois Council on Economic Education, which allows students to use real Internet research and news updates, making the simulation an even better mirror of the real marketplace. And whereas teams started with a virtual cash account of $100,000 and strove to create the best-performing portfolio using a live trading simulation while researching and evaluating stocks to make decisions based upon what they had learned. And whereas York Community High School business students Jacob Graziana, Eric Hough, Zach Miller, Nikki Passaris and Jack Pulte placed second out of 541 teams in the 2012-2013 Econ Illinois Stock Market Game. And whereas, the team finished with a $22,104 growth in a three-month period that resulted in a return that was over 24 percent above the S&amp;P 500 stock index over the same period. And whereas, these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205 and to our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents and their business teacher, Jim Burrell, for this outstanding accomplishment. Next on our agenda is the Illinois High School Tennis Coaches Association Coach of the Year.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Diana Smith, who will do the honors this evening. Diana?
Thank you for the opportunity to recognize this outstanding man. I was very honored that he asked me to introduce him tonight. It means a lot to me and I know you're very proud of him as well. We're here tonight to recognize him for being named the Coach of the Year for the State of Illinois by the High School Tennis Coaches Association. And you're aware that there are a number of accomplishments at York that go along with that, sectional qualifiers and state qualifier sectional championships. And really, he's had a couple of teams that have broken records, been the highest performing teams in York history. But I also thought it was important that you know a little bit about him personally and I'm happy to share those things. His parents are here tonight, who are members of the Elmhurst community and his wife Erica, who's a clinical psychologist. And also, Mr. Morris, the interim athletic director is here, and Ms. Goldman, who works with him, is the Assistant Principal in Student Services. We were all so happy to have a chance to recognize him. Trace Hyman is a scholar and an athlete and a gentleman. And those are the words that I used in 1998 when I introduced Trace as the faculty award winner at Sandberg Middle School when he was an eighth grader. A scholar, an athlete and a gentleman. And I remember the honor, really a privilege to have Trace in class, as many teachers remember him. It was time for us to select a faculty award winner and he was such a clear choice. He was hardworking, dedicated, great work ethic, but also great character. But if I could take a minute just to also share that on a personal level, Trace had a great impact on my family. I had three young sons at the time, had just moved here. And Trace, many afternoons when I was working in my classroom, my kids were there with me in the classroom and Trace would go in, tutor my own children, work with them, play games and cards. And they had a saying, they used to say, whenever there was a dilemma between them, they used to say, "What would Trace Hyman do?" And that would answer it. He was a role model even then, in eighth grade. Then he went on to York, where he became a member of the National Honors Society, served on our math team, he was a freshman mentor back then. He was also the captain, I think, of his basketball, soccer and tennis teams, all three back then. He went on to Carthage College and played tennis there and that's when the stars aligned for District 205 because he made a decision to teach and he returned to his community and to our district. And we hired him as a PE teacher, a great PE teacher, and he eventually became the head coach of both our boys and girls tennis teams. And then last year, when we lost Jason Reinicki, who became an administrator in Michigan, one door closed and another one opened because that gave us an opportunity to make Trace Hyman our new Dean of Students. He is an outstanding dean. He works hard. He is thoughtful and fair and cares about kids and always puts students first. It's been a pleasure to have him there. He's also the Chair of our OAC Committee, which is our policy committee at York. He chairs that, he's part of the Achieve Team and is a wonderful coach as well. So I know Board of Education, it's an honor for you to see somebody come through the system. It is for us too, to come back, work here and be recognized by the Tennis Coaches Association as well. So it's my privilege to introduce my colleague, Trace Hyman. Do you want to say?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Smith, for those kind words.
Call me Diana.
And thank you very much to the Board for the honor and honoring me. And District 205 has had a great impact on me, as Diana mentioned, coming up through the system and going to Edison, Sandberg, York. Just, I'm very honored to be here, to represent the school and the greater state of Illinois. So thank you very much for everything.
We're going to belabor the point, sorry Trace, but I have personal experience and observe you not only with my two children, who were tennis players underneath you from your first year to last year, but you know, saw you with a lot of the kids throughout the district. So you're going to hear from the proclamation, the evaluation criteria that the association used to select Trace. But as my fellow Board members have had the opportunity to articulate for other employees and groups and students within District 205, you know, we have the pleasure to recognize people. This award is especially important to us and I'll tell you why. It really exemplifies, you know, what we're looking for in an organization, a community and Ms. Smith has articulated some of those things. So it's not just, you know, who you are as an individual and as you pursue every area in your life, but specifically with coaching and looking at coaching from a educational standpoint. So we know that a winning record is required to win this award. However, it's balanced with development on and off the court, in the on and off-season of mental toughness and strategy, teamwork and developing leadership skills, not simply athletic ability and performance. Trace began coaching his first year with practices that included a book discussion. How do you think the students like that, right? But it helped the students better understand these different components that are critical in developing success. It's not just on the court when you're competing against your competition. It's, as the first book, in your first book discussion said, "To practice like you play." You can't, and you told the kids that it was, you can't expect to go out on that critical match and play any different than the way that you practice. And so you exhibit that in your life and you teach that to the students, which is very important. So, sorry, I missed. He has followed through with organizing sports psychology assistance to students that are interested in further developing the triumph of the mental game, which is critical to tennis as well. It's just not your physical athletic ability, but it's like chess, as Coach Sir had talked to you and us as parents and students about. So that's critical to success in tennis and it is applied to academics and in life. As you and Coach Sir had always said from, you know, day one, is that you have the best students because in tennis, you have to be, you know, academically gifted as well as athletically gifted and put the whole package together. Your program includes setting goals, evaluating performance against those goals and adjusting as necessary to achieve not only the personal, but the team success of the players and the team. Everyone gets a chance to develop and Trace supports this development not only in-season with York, but in the off-season by collaborating and partnering with Elmhurst Park District and Courts Plus. Coach Hyman has worked collaboratively to build a strong off-season program to prepare our students prior to entering high school and our tennis seasons. During summer camps, tennis team players can even participate in developing underclassmen by helping coach those summer camps. So it's, you know, all of your great qualities, as Ms. Smith has articulated, you are helping all of our students do that, not just academically, but through all the aspects of life that are important, even in the game of tennis and outside. So ultimately, our students must perform and the girls tennis team certainly did that. They finished the highest in York's history and the team finished in the state's top 10 for the second straight year. To quote Coach Hyman in one of our local newspapers, he says, "We had a great group of girls who worked very hard, both during the season and in the off-season to help prepare them." Coach Hyman understands that the students must perform, but he also understands his job, which is to develop the students to perform at their very best." So congratulations, Coach Hyman, and congratulations to the girls.
(Applause)
Okay, whereas, each year, the Illinois High School Tennis Coaches Association, IHSTCA, recognize a coach based on team record, obstacles faced by the team, contributions the coach has made to the sport outside of the high school season and player development. And whereas, the Illinois High School Team Coaches Association named York Community High School Girls Tennis Coach Trace Hyman Coach of the Year for 2012. And whereas, the York Girls Tennis Team guided by Coach Hyman completed a successful season highlighted by six consecutive sectional championships, five players making All-State, six players qualifying for the state tournament, the team finishing the highest in York's history and the team finishing in the state's top 10 for the second straight year. And whereas, Coach Hyman prepared the team to compete against the state's finest on a weekly basis and noted, "We had a great group of girls who worked very hard, both during the season and in the off-season to help prepare themselves. With support from York and the Elmhurst community, we are very excited to continue building our program at the high school." And whereas, on January 25th, 2013, Coach Hyman was honored at an awards luncheon by the IHSTCA. And whereas, these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205 and to the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express deep appreciation and congratulations to Coach Hyman for these outstanding accomplishments. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
It's always, as Jim said, a special night. It's the best part of the agenda. So if you're waiting for another highlight, I have two more and then you can probably leave. So just two announcements. First of all, SchoolSearch, if you don't know, is an educational research and consulting firm that assists relocating families by providing online rankings to school systems across the United States. SchoolSearch uses the same criteria to judge all the districts across the country and they have identified five factors that they feel are of greatest importance among families who are relocating to a new school system. The factors, those five are academic performance, pupil-teacher ratio, expenditure per pupil, educational level of teachers and average teacher salary. Elmhurst School District this year has been awarded the Bright Red Apple Award by Ed Reese, SchoolSearch. Out of 866 school districts in Illinois, only 78 were honored based on those factors. And this is the 13th year in a row that Elmhurst has been so honored. So I think that speaks volumes about the quality of Elmhurst school system. So on behalf of all of our faculty, staff and the community, congratulations on really having outstanding recognition for a really exceptional school district. And then finally, I'm proud to announce that if you remember a couple of board meetings ago, we honored our national semifinalists here one evening. Well, I'm proud to announce that six students have been named finalists for the National Merit Scholarship and are now competing with 15,000 other finalists for a significant amount of scholarship money. And so those six are Karen Altergot, Caroline Dirkscheide, Evan Fabry, Emma Fisher, Ushana and Matthew Wilbur. So on behalf of the Board and the school district, congratulations to those six students. Exceptional to have six finalists from one high school. So congratulations again, York faculty, staff, everyone that's had an influence on these students. The proof is always in how they go on and perform in a school district and these six students are proudly representing Elmhurst. So congratulations. Thanks.
This is where we traditionally call a little break for anybody who's got to go home and do homework and then continue on with the rest of our meeting. This next section of our meeting is a workshop session. And what differentiates a workshop session from a business session is that we invite public comments on this specific topic, which will be the tentative intergovernmental agreement for TIF 4 that has been posted on our website for the last few days. We'll encourage public comments. The Board will then discuss and then we'll encourage the public to come back up and comment again. So with that, is there any public comment on the tentative intergovernmental TIF agreement that's been on the website? Okay, hearing none. Let's just move then directly to Board discussion about this tentative agreement. Anybody have any discussion? Mrs. Daroni?
It's apparent the community is behind us and thinks we've done a good job, which I do too.
Okay, for what could be the shortest section of our meeting tonight. Okay, all right. And we'll, I think the plan is to pull this after, to vote, right before we vote as well. So, by the way.
Going back a year, I think the purpose of the intergovernmental agreement is good governance. And I think we talked about that from a perspective along a land far away and a time long, long ago. But the details and the minutia, I think those are things that, while some might never be satisfied with what the two governing agencies can come up with, I think the most important thing is that, at least from my perspective, the intention was and remains to provide guidance and to document what our intentions are, this governing body and the city council. Life changes quickly and things change quickly and the economy changes and circumstances change. But the goal is to document what this, at this time, what our intentions are and what the city's intentions are, to guide future boards. And so from that perspective, I think it probably took us a very long time. There are no guarantees, there are no promises that this will result in funds to the district. But I think it articulates well what the intentions of this body and of what our brethren on the city council have come to find agreement upon. And for that reason, I fully support the intergovernmental agreement and its current state and I'm happy to have this done before the election, put this behind us and move forward.
If I can, I'm just going to make one quick comment now and a little more later. But I just want to quickly, first of all, over the weekend, I heard twice a rumor going around town that the school board was offered a million dollars by the city of Elmhurst and we, the school board, turned it down. You know, let me clarify a few facts behind that rumor. First of all, it's partially true. A year ago, the city of Elmhurst did offer us a million dollars, which is surplus out of TIF 2, which is about a million and a half dollars. The school district is about 66 percent of your property tax bill. And so a million dollars would be our, the school district share of that million and a half. And we did turn it down. Because we then have spent the last year negotiating with the city and what we've managed to transform that million-dollar offer for the schools is into a $10 million offer for the schools. And that's what we collectively as a Board have been spending our past year on, among other things. So after a year of very careful negotiations with the city, we turned the million into 10 million. And here's how we arrived at that 10 million. First of all, the million dollars from the TIF 2 surplus, within 60 days after signing the agreement, will be delivered to us by the city of Elmhurst. In years 11 through 23 of the TIF, 10 percent of the increment generated by the TIF will be released, will be declared surplus and released to the other governmental bodies. declared surplus and released to the other governmental bodies. And again, the school district's current share of that is 66%. So about 6.6% of the increment generated from years 11 through 23 will be given to the, declared surplus and given to the school district. We estimate that to be about $3 million over the life of the TIF. Mr. Bloom, Mr. McDonough, is that correct? Four? I'm sorry.
Between three and four.
Between three and four. Okay. And this is all based upon the city's cash flow projections. Clearly, you know, they do not have a crystal ball that can estimate exactly, but this is their, what they consider to be their most likely case of the cash flows that the TIF would generate. Churchville is our second neediest school in terms of capital projects and repairs. The city graciously included our two District 205 schools, Churchville and Conrad Fisher, into the TIF area. So what the city has offered us for specifically those two schools, since they're part of the TIF, is after Han Street is completed, the development is completed, and after the TIF district recoups any additional investment that it would make into the Han Street project, that 35% of the cash flows from property taxes collected on the Han Street development would go to capital repairs for Fisher and Churchville. That adds up to about another $3 million based upon their projections. And additionally, about another $3 million, the city has promised us when the TIF district is able to do so. I mean, clearly predicting for 23 years is a pretty difficult thing to do. So the city says, when they have the money, they'll turn it over. So that's an additional $6 million that can be used for very needed repairs at Churchville and Conrad Fisher, all totaling about $10 million from the city's TIF district to our schools. I'll comment a little more later after we vote on it. But I just wanted to make it clear what this agreement was all about and what the cash flows, where they're coming from, and how they total up to approximately, the projection is approximately $10 million over the 23-year life of the TIF. So, Mr. McDonough?
I just want to let people know, who may be watching this on tape, that we will be giving a little more comment. This is a discussion session, and we'll give more comment just before we vote on it. And so this is not the total sum of comments we have. I'm going to speak, I feel in favor of this agreement when we hear the motion. Is that the way this is going to run? Or shall we do it now?
Can we procedurally pull it off the consent agenda now and discuss it? Or do we have to wait until the consent?
We're discussing it now. I think we can just, shall we?
Then fine, we'll discuss it. Sorry, I should have turned that on. That's fine. We can discuss it now, and then leave it on the consent agenda and not pull it.
Okay, all right.
So that's fine.
Do you want to go first? All right. This is a long process, and I have a few comments here, and I hope you'll indulge me because this is a particular point that I've taken rather seriously, and everybody else has too. I think the starting point for all of us sitting at this table, and the city as well, is that we're in this for the kids, and we're trying to provide all the resources we can for our administration and our teachers and our staff to provide them with the best education possible. We've discussed going out into the community to discuss our significant financial challenges we face and ultimately present the community its choices for the future. And a question we're going to face in that endeavor is to show whether we have practiced good stewardship of the district's assets. And that means marshaling and maximizing all available resources. So regardless of whether you believe the district has a claim to certain funds, or if you believe that our role in TIF is simply one of telling our story and persuading other parties to act, we have an obligation and have had an obligation to engage with the city on these issues. And so that was why we asked back in September 2011 to be involved as early as possible in the decisions. And while we may not have started as early as we, some of us might have liked, I believe we caught up. And I believe this agreement is an excellent response from the city. I believe this agreement meets our goals. And a couple of things, just to observe, that I think are important in understanding how this agreement makes sense for this district, and for the kids especially, is that, a couple of things I'd like to say, is that TIF is basically just a tool. And you really wouldn't say, "I support TIF," or "I'm against TIF," any more than you might, you know, tell a builder, "I support your using a power saw." Nobody really cares if their builder's going to use a power saw. They just want to know that it's the right tool to build a beautiful home, and they want to know that he's not going to cut his thumb off. So it's all about how you use the tool. The second aspect about TIF is that it's a very powerful tool, and it should be. In its unmoderated form, it's designed for emergencies in communities where the highest level of intervention is necessary. Here in Elmhurst, there is need. There's no question there's need. But certainly, North York TIF district is not in extremis. Investment and growth are not nonexistent. They are lower and slower than they should be and could be with the addition of some incentives. So because it's low and slow, before the recession, it was not flat, there's definitely some short-term revenue that the district would forego through the establishment of the TIF 4 district. And as we've said before, we really can't afford any short-term loss of short-term revenue. But based on these two aspects of TIF, I fully support this agreement as moderating the tool, so that TIF is truly the tool that fits the job in this community. It meets my central requirement that the short-term revenues that the district would lose through the imposition of TIF 4 and the removal of the properties from TIF 1 to TIF 4 are replaced. Jim outlined very well the parts that the district is receiving from those, and I won't go over those again. And my estimation comes out to about $8 million if the unencumbered costs are not ultimately available, and $11 million if all of them are. Of course, this is dependent on EAV growth, which has been projected, but we've projected that on both sides of the ledger. I think what the district might have been giving up through the creation of TIF 4 and the transfer of the TIF 1 properties has not been well explained publicly, and I take some of the blame for that. And therefore, not having been explained publicly, I don't think it's been adequately reported, and there have been some differing views about this. But this is what I see is that, is there, is without a doubt, these are very hard things to quantify, what the district would be giving up. But we have an obligation to today's students and to future students to do that. So using an allocation approach and using growth assumptions on both sides of the ledger, it seems to me that the school district and the kids we represent would be foregoing $8 to $11 million in short-term revenues from the establishment of TIF 4 and the transfer of the properties. But this is the exact same number as the revenue sharing provisions that are in the intergovernmental agreement. And with these numbers being substantially the same, this means that TIF 4, as modified by the intergovernmental agreement, is exactly the type of pay-as-you-go proposition that we had asked for from the city from the very start, when we first started talking about TIF back in September of 2011. This agreement appears to substantially replace every dollar of short-term revenue, while allowing the city a substantial pool of resources from which to provide incentives for the long-term EAV growth, not only of the city but of the district as well. And we're grateful for that. But more fundamentally, by being short-term revenue neutral, it respects our obligation to treat today's students and tomorrow's students equally in the allocation of resources. There are some that said the city has the legal right to unilaterally remove the Han properties, and I did not agree. From my point of view, that avoided the discussion of whether it was the right thing to do for the kids in this community. And for a while, we couldn't finalize language because of our differences on this particular issue. But thanks to the courage of certain people on both sides of the table, people were willing to try to see the issue through the other side's frame of reference, and there's now a settlement. And those framing issues simply don't matter any longer. And I specifically want to thank Mayor Levin for his leadership in closing the deal on this final item. He was very, very effective in bringing the parties together. And so I support this agreement as being the right way to use the right tool of TIF, smartly, collaboratively, collaboratively, in a way that truly fits the needs of this community and especially this school district. And we'll continue to urge the city to recognize that the single most important element of its economic development program is the people of Elmhurst, who are the very customer base that new businesses crave. And we believe an investment in the education of the children in this district is the best program for leveraging this community's greatest resource, its people. And thanks for indulging me in that statement.
Quite all right. Anyone else have comments? Mrs. Ebner?
That was a lot. So I just want to say one thing. I don't want to say anything twice. But one of the reasons that this took a while is because of the new language, which you mentioned at the end. There has not been language like what we have in this intergovernmental agreement in any other intergovernmental agreement in Elmhurst. So this was new language for Elmhurst. So that took longer time, months, to go back and forth with new language. So it's, that was part of the puzzle too.
Mrs. Stufan?
Thank you. I support this intergovernmental agreement that is presented to us. So we've talked a lot about it for a very long time. I didn't even remember it was that long ago, John. But I do think that it was very good discussions, and it represents the taxpayers and all of the, both from a city constituent and the school district constituent perspective, and that's what we're elected to do. So it was very well done.
Mr. Bloom?
All right. Because you guys have already said everything I was going to say, I'll just close with, you know, I think historically, the city has been a great partner to the school district. I think this is another example of that. Despite taking longer than any four-page document I've ever negotiated in my life to get done, I appreciate the city taking the time to understand our point of view and ultimately getting to something that I think works for both of us, and I will support it. Thank you.
Mrs. Hirsch?
I just have a clarification question. When we look at the capital expense for the two schools that are included in the TIF area, we included a capital expense, there's a list that is included in the document that's on Board Docs, Exhibit A. And I'm noticing that, I don't know, I think the dates on these are as old as the, as long as the negotiations have been going on. November 28th, 2011 was the last time, or what is at least included in the document that I'm looking at. And so I just want to confirm that either A, we are not restricted to this exact list when we submit for reimbursement from the city, or these exact dollar amounts, and/or B, if in fact the capital requirements change. One of the things that I'm noting that I'm not seeing is on Conrad Fisher, I'm not seeing an item, a line item for safe and secure entrance in terms of modifying, that's something that we had looked at. It might not have been the highest on our list on Conrad Fisher in terms of what our capital projects were at that point in time, because it's, it clearly doesn't meet the gold standard of what we'd like to accomplish. So I'm just looking for some, you know, a one-time, if we can just either go back and provide the most recent listing to be included in the document of our capital project requirement. And I just want to make sure that I have an understanding. At this point, I'm not looking to change the agreement or not support the agreement. The point is to have the most recent version of what we believe. We know that there's a cap of $6 million, but I just want to make sure that whatever document is actually signed, that was our most recent and current understanding of what the capital requirements were for these two buildings that we were looking to submit for reimbursement long in the future.
I think Mr. Bloom and Mr. McDonough are prepared to give you some clarification there, it looks like.
One issue, tell me if I'm reading this right, because when we started these negotiations, this was $5 million of capital, right? And there's a million in another bucket, and now it's, now it's six. There's only five in here, and we have six. So I don't know whether we didn't change it when we, when we were negotiating to the six. So that would be a question, another question that I would have to look for. I think the entire amount is off, in addition to what may be there, some, perhaps we can approve it with an updated exhibit, or subject to an updated exhibit.
Yeah, that is a good catch. We'll, before the city votes on this on Monday, we'll make sure that that's updated.
I just want to be clear. My intention is not to change necessarily dollar amounts. I think there were very honest and open discussions about what the capital requirements are. These two particular schools, at the point in time in November of 2011, represented $5 million, but we have $28 million worth of capital projects that are unfunded. So I'm not looking to reopen, I just think it's important to have, make sure, again, the purpose of a year-long negotiation with the city is that we all have the same understanding of what the intention is. So if we can just clarify the intention, I think that would be helpful.
I think the situation we have here is that, all we have to do is make sure that list that there's more than $6 million worth of items on it. And let me ask Mr. McDonough to comment.
I don't want to give a legal opinion, but it sure seems to me like the intention of the document is for the exhibit to show the kinds of things that will be capital expenses. I think it says the Exhibit A is a budget of what the city, or the district intends to spend. I'm sorry, I just lost the provision there. But the intention is not that it be exclusive, but it be more of an example of the things that the district can spend the capital funds on. The determinative factor is it a TIF-eligible expense, and that's built into the process of approving the funds.
Mr. Bloom?
The history of this was, we start out with well in excess of six. So it's not that we've got five and we're going to add something that wasn't on the list. It was pared back to five because that was the original deal. So I think we go back to the original list, and we have much more than six to spend on those buildings. So to your point, I think somebody could understand that maybe we're trying to add another million. We're not. I mean, this, the list was sized based on what the negotiated dollar amount was. The negotiated dollar amount is now $6 million. We just never updated the list.
I go back to the original intention of this year-long effort is to make sure that we have clarity and agreement with the city. And I think this could be a potential point of contention, which we're trying to avoid. So whether it's, we add additional projects, or whether, whatever it takes, let's just have it all wrapped up and move forward.
Anything else? Mrs. Daroni?
I too will support the agreement. You can leave it in the consent agenda, I won't be pulling it off. I think it's a good one. I would urge the board, as you go forward, to just take another look at the 2004 agreement and see if you can apply some of the diligence that we've spent getting this one nailed down to go back and provide a little more clarity to that one, because that one's getting ready to give the school district some funds. And we just want to be sure that both bodies, at this point, understand what's going on with that one, the 2004 agreement, which was the extension of TIF 1.
Right, yes, thank you. Yeah, and we will, we've had a few discussions along the way about that, and we'll make sure that we follow up. Anything else? I do have a couple of comments at the end here. I mean, one reason this took so long is because the way that TIF, the way that TIF law is written is it gives all the power and all the cards written is it gives all the power and all the cards to the city of Elmhurst. And I'd say it's a tribute to our city council, and I'll get to that in a second. It's a tribute to our city council that they negotiated the agreement that they did. But let me first start with, there's a lot of people that contributed to this agreement. And I just want to thank a few of them. I'm sure I'll forget some people, and I apologize in advance. But first, our administrative team. Superintendent Purnell, Assistant Superintendent Welton, put an enormous amount of time into this. I want to thank them very much for their hard work, and particularly the patience which they demonstrated along the way. Second, I want to thank my colleagues on the school board for their patience as well. I know this was a long journey, and people's patience were thin, but hopefully everyone will agree that it was worth the wait. Thirdly, a special thanks goes to two board members in particular. First, Chris Bloom, that brought his financial expertise in analyzing cash flows from this proposed TIF IV, and particularly for his steady hand during the negotiating process. Second, to John McDonough, for his very effective help during the negotiation process, and particularly for lending his technical and legal expertise in the field of TIFs to the children of this district. Gentlemen, thank you very, very much for all of your hard work. And I'd also like to thank, as I mentioned before, our city council for their patience and their affirmative vote this next Monday night. I want to thank the city staff, City Manager Jim Grabowski, Assistant City Manager Mike Kopp, Marilyn Gaston, and Tom Truzine for all of the work that they put into this and the countless number of hours that they put into this as well. And a special thank you to Zoning and Planning Committee Chairman Steve Morley for adding Churchville and Fisher schools into the TIF boundaries. They weren't initially within the TIF boundaries. He and I had a discussion, and the very next day, they were included in the TIF. And I want to thank him for recognizing that our schools, for wisely recognizing the value that our schools bring to the redevelopment of any area of our city. It was a pleasure to negotiate with him over the course of the past 12 months, and for all the support of his committee members on the zoning and planning committee, Danny Palomsky and Norm Leader as well. And then, as Mr. McDonough alluded to, a very special thanks goes to our acting mayor, Scott Levin. Levin, I'm sorry. I have a friend who's same spelling, different pronunciation. Last week, we were at the one-yard line. We were so close, but yet so far from this agreement. And Mayor Levin and Mr. McDonough sat down together and finished the agreement with mutually acceptable language and jointly carried that ball over the goal line. Personally, I would love a framed picture of that meeting to hang in my office. There are many who said that would never happen. Now, to be very clear, this agreement does not solve the school district's near-term financial challenges. $1 million of the total of approximately $10 million in this agreement will show up in the first few years. It'll show up in 60 days. The vast majority of cash flows from this agreement will not even begin until our current class of second graders, our seniors in high school. Without a doubt, this agreement is a landmark agreement in the state of Illinois. Not only is this language not appear in any other TIF agreement within Elmhurst, but nowhere in the state of Illinois has a municipal government been as generous with their schools as the Elmhurst City Council has been with us. I think it clearly demonstrates that our governmental units can work together for the good of all of Elmhurst, and that economic development can coexist collaboratively with the education of our children, which will result in brighter futures for both our city and our children. Thanks. Mr. Bloom?
One technical point. The million boxes, no earlier than 60 or later than 120 is the language. So just to make sure that when it's day 60, it doesn't show up, it's not a default. It's somewhere between 60 and 120. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm counting on the 60, but you're right, they have up to 120. And I think that's a fairly moot point, so. All right. Anything else? Can I share? Yes, absolutely. Mr. Purnell?
I just want to say, one of the joys of coming to Illinois was learning all about TIFs. So thank you for that learning curve. It's greatly appreciated. I do want to say, though, and I think this is for the sake of the community, it would have been very easy in these negotiations for everybody to throw up their hands, give up, you know, start a war, make comments, ruin some relationships and all of that. I think the community needs to, this Board of Education spent a lot of time on this, lot of discussion, a lot of going back and forth about the pros and cons of what we were going to do. But I think the board needs to be recognized for staying with it, for really working hard to get this done for the benefit of the students and a benefit to the community, and the business community, and overall, the Elmhurst community, because hopefully, this is a win-win. And I think both the city and this Board of Education needs to be congratulated for being persistent, again, for not giving up. It would have been easy. But this board was absolutely dedicated to do the right thing for our students and for the school district, and at the same time, recognizing the needs of the city. So I think that's rare. I think a lot of these TIFs get thrown together the way they do because there's not persistence, there's not dialogue, there's not urgency that says, no, we need to do this right. So on behalf of the community, as the superintendent, I just want to recognize the Board of Education for being persistent, for not accepting something less, and for getting the kind of agreement that I think is going to benefit students long after a lot of us are gone. And the board members here will be, you know, maybe, you know, will be bronze statute, but I don't think so, and probably forgotten, but at this moment, I don't think you should be forgotten. I think it's a real credit to all of you that you worked through this problem and got it done. So on behalf of the community, thank you.
Actually, had we thought that of enticing you to come to Elmhurst with the free education and Illinois' tax increment financing laws, I guess we were remiss in not pointing that out to you.
Just for the record, if you ask me to give money back, it's probably not going to happen, so.
Haven't thought of that either, but now that you mention it. Next on our agenda is public comments about the rest of the board meeting. I have no cards of people interested in public comments. Are there any? Then let's move on to superintendent's communication. Mr. Purnell?
Yes. One of the things that we had done in January was lay out some assumptions for putting together a tentative budget that we are planning to move forward for the rest of this year, and with ultimate approval in August of our budget for the '13-'14 school year. Some of those assumptions were related to staffing. And when I asked the board in January, there was an approval of those assumptions. But I thought tonight, and based on some of the feedback I got from board members, it would be a good opportunity to sit tonight and go through in detail what those staffing assumptions were, and our plans for those staffing assumptions moving forward for next year. The staffing process is very, very time-consuming. And Brad and his team, along with Charles and myself, have been sitting with principals, tentatively planning out staffing for the coming school year. And so we want to make sure that our understanding of those assumptions are still solid. We want to update some of those numbers of what our staffing looks like. There's not major changes. Those assumptions on the nondiscretionary staffing that we presented in January are still holding. But we want to take the opportunity to present those again, and then answer any questions that board members may have about the staffing and those assumptions as we move forward. As I said again, part of this is driven by the RIF process. The RIF process has to be done in April, so that is the critical timeline that backs all of this up. So again, we are trying to finalize staffing this week. Brad will be working over spring break with his team to move forward on those staffing assumptions, and then deciding if we have RIFs because, not because of finances, because the board has committed not that we will have the financing, not to RIF certified staff, but due to enrollment or program, there may be some exceptions to that, and we may be in a position to RIF some teachers. We are still trying to determine that, and will report back to the board with that process in April. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brad, to Charles, and to Meg. I think Charles is going to go first and talk about some of the staffing issues under his watch. So Dr. Johns?
If you'll recall from the January 8th meeting, we had put forward a list of nondiscretionary and discretionary human resource allocations that we were recommending. For the purposes of this evening's conversation, I'm just going to reiterate the nondiscretionary recommendations that were made by Brad, Meg, and myself. At that time, we were very aware of the fiscal considerations of the district, and we put together our recommendation based really on four principles that we feel should drive the district. The first is that we wanted to make sure that we adequately and appropriately fulfilled state and federal mandates, in particular, special education and the English Language Learner Program. Secondly, we thought and believe it is important to adhere to best practices, and in this case, for those two programs, special education and English Language Learners, it would be to provide an adequately complete continuum of services to meet the needs of those students. Our third consideration stems from last year, and that was the class-sized targets that we talked about last year. We're holding those, again, rolling them over for this year. And fourth, and finally, and this is not something that necessarily makes an item nondiscretionary, but it is an added savings for the district, is with the tight staffing that we used this year, we had a number of teachers who had to commute between sites. Through deep analysis, we found that really by adding a few tenths of staffing, we could probably save as a net in staffing across the district. So that was our fourth consideration, which was to reduce the amount of travel time within the district, as really as a method to increase savings. This doesn't, like I said, doesn't make something nondiscretionary, but it's an added bonus. After much review, we have been able to make subtle changes to the staffing recommendations that you heard two months ago. As time progresses, we can be more and more confident with projections that we have in place for staffing, because we'll have more information. A lot of information has arisen since January 8th. However, it is really incumbent upon all of us who are part of these decisions to realize that it only takes a few demographic or population changes at a particular school, and these numbers won't hold even, that in many cases, we're very close to a threshold that would trigger additional staffing. And that is something that Brad is going to review, the mainstream staffing for the district. Then Meg will follow with the special ed staffing, and then I'll conclude with the English Language Learner staffing. So Brad?
Thank you. As Dr. John presented back in January, we were looking at about an 8.7 FTE increase for the mainstream areas of education. .84 of that was looked at due to elementary for music, world language, and art, and we still think that this is potentially holding true, but there has not been a great deal of analysis done on this particular number as of right now. The other place we were showing an increase was about 7.9 FTE associated with the middle school, and we have some further clarification on that piece, but we were also anticipating and predicting a zero increase in FTE at York. The new numbers, we now can look at in a little bit of a different fashion. We think that there is going to be a three FTE reduction at elementary in core instruction, not looking at UA, not looking at PE or world language, but just a three FTE in core. I would caution that three FTE decrease that we're talking about in the core area in a couple of ways. One, currently, we have six sections of classes throughout the district at the elementary class level that are averaging 26 students or greater. So we could easily tip one or two sections very easily in that example. One, we have one section right now that is sitting with 108 students at a grade level. We're predicting four sections, which brings us right to the target of 27 kids each. Obviously, if three students, or four, move in in a given period of time, we could very easily end up going from a fourth section to a fifth section. So that is something that, again, we have six of those sections district-wide that are in that 26 to 27 target range that could tip. The other piece that I would caution with the minus, with the negative, or the three FTE decrease, has to do with kindergarten. Currently, our kindergarten enrollment is down versus what we typically see at this particular point in time. So that minus three FTE does factor that as well. Moving on to the middle school piece, we predicted a 7.9-ish FTE increase there. And what we're actually showing right now is about an 8.036, not to be too exact, FTE increase. So that number, I think, going and predicting that back in January and being that close, now that we have more information, was very, was very good. One of the things that, again, I would caution us on that particular increase as well, is that we do have the math levels at incoming sixth graders, that we still don't have the full definitive number as to who is going to be in reach, who would be in advanced math, who would be in regular. So depending upon how those numbers play out, there very easily could be an increase there. And we do also have students throughout the district who are trying to move a math level between grade levels, meaning somebody who was in, let's say, a regular math class in sixth grade, might be working very hard to move into the advanced math or the middle level math in seventh grade, and so therefore, we won't know that for a little while as well. So that could impact those numbers. But I still think at the middle school, we're right where we want to be, and where we said we would be. And then finally, in looking at York, York is still predicting to be right on board with a zero FTE increase for next year. So when all that is said and done, right now, in summary, we're looking at about a 5.8 FTE increase at all three grade levels when it comes to the mainstream. But again, I just encourage you to remember the cautions that we talked about as far as how quickly the FTE piece could change on us. And with that, I'll turn it over to Meg for special education.
For the special ed piece, we were remarkably on target for what our needs were going to be for next year. We have had no changes. Just to go through your memo one more time, the resource, elementary, and middle school level position for the 1.0 FTE would likely be used at the North End, where we're attempting to strengthen our special education service delivery to meet the needs of the students at Fisher and at Churchville. The students on the North End are typically presenting us with needs that are significantly more challenging with regard to their cognitive level and their learning difficulties. So what we are typically seeing in other schools would be an average of students receiving about 350 minutes per week of special education services, whereas students in the buildings that we're looking to strengthen are qualifying for minutes that are at about 800 to 1,000 minutes per week. So you can see that if we're counting an individual student, there's a difference between a student who receives 300 minutes a week versus students who receive 1,000 minutes a week when it comes to workload of our staff. So that, if you have, do you have questions about that particular piece? Okay, seeing none. Instructional, special education classroom, this may be in relationship to that bright red apple award that we received. We are seeing students who are moving into the district for our special education programs, whether that is good or that is bad. They're here, and we need to provide for their needs. The students who are coming out of Madison are needing programming. So what we are doing is, last year, we added a class for students in K through 2 at Jackson. It was one of the buildings that still had room, and one of the buildings that did not have an instructional program currently. We are going to be looking to expand that to service students in grades three through five, who are now eligible for instructional programming. That program is going to be drawing from throughout the district. It is not just for students in the Jackson boundary. And to meet the needs of the students, we are going to need 1.0 FTE for that program. The self-contained needs for an autism teacher at York have not changed. We do not have a section We do not have a section for autism at York yet, and the need has presented itself. The .5 teacher of the deaf at York, there is no change in the needs there. We definitely need a teacher of the deaf at York to increase from a .5 to a 1.0. Speech-to-language pathologists, our caseloads in the district are hovering at about 55, and the state limit, and that is a hard and fast limit, is 60. And we also have students similar to the situation with resource where their minutes in speech are significantly higher depending on their level of disabling condition. The social worker in the self-contained programs, we opened several self-contained programs and did not add to our social work support. And as a result of that, if we are going to do what some districts have done, which is only have social workers address the needs of students with IEPs, we will be eliminating the support that we give to the regular education students, anything from grief and loss groups to divorce groups to, you know, peers not getting along, lunch bunch, our social workers trying to work with those students. So a 1.4 would enable us to keep all of those things for the general education students and still be able to meet the needs of our students in the self-contained programs. And I'd be happy to take any questions about this staffing pattern.
The district, that last item that you had stated-
That's correct.
Can I ask one question? So how much of this is from insourcing stuff or programs that were previously outsourced? And is there a corresponding savings on the tuition side?
We would be, it's money that we would be spending if we weren't programming for students with autism. We would be spending probably between 70,000 and 80,000 per student to send those students out, and that's not including transportation. So if we can bring it in-house and use existing resources and add just one teacher, there would be a savings, yes.
So the tuition line that we have may continue to come down?
It's anticipated that it would stay stable because we're looking at 10% increases-
It's because of enrollment?
Because of enrollment and because of increases in tuition at 10% per year.
You must be in the healthcare business, right?
Yeah, exactly.
In the PMA projection, we have, if I remember correctly, going out in the future, five, 10 years, however long it goes, I just remember seeing it was plus 10 for staffing, or was it special ed? Was it staffing overall?
Staffing.
Okay, so this year would be an anomaly, like a spike, and then we'd go to 10? I don't understand how it would fit in with the PMA projections.
We've been building capacity over the last four years by bringing the programs in and reducing the number of students who have to go out. There's two reasons for that. Obviously, we want the tuition line item to continue to stay constant and not have huge spikes as these students continue to move into our district. And at the same time, when we send students out, we have absolutely no control over their day-to-day education. And the feeling that I've been given from, you know, past superintendents and the current superintendent is that we want all students in Elmhurst, if at all possible, to have access to the rich curriculum that we provide here.
So are you comfortable with that projection then, like the next, for the next years of 10, plus 10 first step? Or maybe it's a question for you, Mr. Perlmutter, plus 10 after seeing like this and then we go years out, plus, how does that work?
You know, again, looking at a crystal ball, can I guarantee it's going to be 10? I can't. But as Meg said, I think we've built enough capacity now within the district that I don't think we're going to be in a position to add new programs at the rate we have been the last three or four years because all the students that were capable of coming back have probably, we're pretty close to bringing them back.
It's very rare, too, to have a situation like we have in Elmhurst where there are schools that do not have self-contained programs within their schools. And we didn't. And we still have buildings that do not have a program for students who, like, say, at Emerson. If we have a student at Emerson who needs to be in special ed more than half of their day, we don't have a program at Emerson for them. We have to send that student to field. And that is not typical. So we're building that capacity within the district by adding these positions.
When you combine the projections on enrollment increases along with what we think is, you know, having a saturation point for special education and at least not having the big increases that we're seeing, we decided that 10 was probably a solid number going forward. Obviously, it can change if we have spikes in enrollment. If we have increasing numbers of special education students that appear and enroll in our district, then that's going to throw these numbers off. But we wanted to put something out there as part of that projection over the next five years, I believe is the projection, and so 10 per year was what we decided on.
Anything else on this part? Mrs. Stupin?
It sounds as though, I mean, I know that, Dr. Johns, you articulated the four principles that we were looking at. I guess I'm going to, I'm going to throw out two big-picture questions. If anybody wants to respond, it's fine. I think you've articulated some of the pieces that, you know, you look at enrollment, you look at needs of students, you know, there's budget pieces and, you know, staffing hits one budget, outplacement hits another, transportation, et cetera. It appears that you're looking at all that. I guess I'm going to ask my two questions. What does this do to our budget? Because it's, you know, different levels are pulled. And I ask in that just because what are the things that we need to be doing? We're going to, you know, we're continuing our series with the legislators for them to understand decisions that are being made that are affecting our levers. And we are trying to manage continuous higher achievement for all of our students in the district with this limited and reducing budget. So, you know, as you look at, you know, what does this do to our budget and what are the decisions that are being made, you know, you know, what can you bring to us to say, you know, if we could, I don't know, like the, you know, the mandates, the state mandates, right? We're getting less money from federal and state, but we're getting increased mandates, right? We see that in SB 7, which is, you know, which is great legislation. You know, we want performance evaluation consistent so that our employees, you know, understand what the playing field is and what the evaluation is going to be. It's truly about continuous improvement and putting that philosophy in place and practice in place. But at the same time, it's expensive. It's not only the time that our employees are taken to accomplish this state mandate where there's no money. And it's also expensive with, you know, not just the time for all of you implementing that, but it's, you know, the systems we put in place, practices, et cetera. I just see that there's a lot of, there's a lot of uneducated pieces, and there's a lot of levers that affect other areas. And so if those things come to light for you, please give them to us because we're, you know, we're meeting with legislators. We've got a presentation put together. We're honing it based on, you know, weekly new information about more decisions that are being made that will affect us, you know, one of which is the stormwater, you know, tax that. And you don't realize that it's affecting education until you really pull back the covers and see that it is reducing dollars for education. And you say, why would that be related? But it is related, okay? So I really, I know that, you know, this looks like it's just enrollment numbers, and so we're just looking at staffing. But as you did illustrate, you know, we are looking at, yes, we want to, we want to reduce the outplacement, I'm not going to say cost because that keeps going up 10% every year, like you said, Meg. But we, the only way that we can affect that then is to bring more services in-house so that we're not having as many students, let's say, go out for outplacement so we don't have, you know, X students times the, you know, cost, you know, times 10% increase every year. So I get that. And so you are really looking at, okay, so we're going to increase the budget on a, our employee standpoint, but we're going to try to decrease it in outplacement, but it doesn't appear that it's going to be a decrease in outplacement, like you said, Meg, because of the increases of 10%. So that's one question, you know. So can, do we have any control over, does it have to be a 10% increase for all these outplacement? You know, is there something that we can be doing? Just asking. The other question is, how is this related to our DPIs? I mean, it sounds as though it's just like enrollment and students, but are we looking at, what outcomes do we expect from these changes?
Karen, related to the DPIs, that's another reason. And actually, I gave you two reasons to try and control the costs as well as to try and control what kind of education the students are actually receiving. It's very difficult to measure ourselves against DPIs for students who are not even within our buildings. So the more students we keep in our buildings, the more students we have control over their achievement.
And those are two different questions. You're asking one question, the impact of mandates and all of that on the school district. The second question is, as subgroups, are we looking at performance and all of that? The answer is yes, we are. And we have ongoing discussions. We just had one this afternoon with our administrative team about why special ed students and some of our other subgroups are underperforming, what are the root causes of that, and how can we fix that? So, but that's, that's an instructional question. The other question is, and I'll use special education, I am old enough to remember when special education hardly existed. These kids were invisible to public schools. They were housed in institutions, they were housed in other places. And in fairness to those students, the wisdom was, that's unfair. All kids should have an equal public education. We need to do something. And so mandates came forward to address the needs of these special education students. And I can tell you, as a brother-in-law who has handicaps, that was a lifesaver for him and for a lot of families who all of a sudden now were able to come back to the public schools, their home neighborhood schools, and have an equal education as much as possible with the handicap that existed. So that was all good. There were reasons for it. I think we still support that because if you have a handicapped child, you want him in the neighborhood school. You want him in the neighborhood district. You want them to be with other students in their neighborhood. The issue is, with the complications and the sophistication of some of the students we are seeing, and they've all, I think they've always been there, we're just better at identifying them, probably with the exception of the autism population that continues to increase and those are high-need students. So I think that's kind of a wild card that is recent. But in all those other cases, those are all good things that we are doing. The problem is, we don't get funding for them. It has been left to the local districts to figure out how you're going to meet those needs, but the laws have been passed to say, this is the kind of program you need to provide to these students. There's certainly justification for providing those programs, but they're tying one hand behind our back by saying, but you can't go back and get extra dollars for these kids. The federal government has put caps on IDA. It's supposed to be funded at 40%. It's barely funded at 14%. So all of those things have an effect on more and more of our funding coming out of the general education pot and going into specific programs for special education students. Again, certainly worthwhile. It's what we should be doing. It's, you know, the law was absolutely right on when it said special ed students should be treated like all students, but there has not been a recognition on the impact of local school districts. And because of limited dollars now over the last four or five years, the spotlight has shown brighter on those issues. And I would hope that as we talk to legislators, there is a growing recognition of just how costly some of this programming is, that it is way beyond what people thought even 20 years ago it would cost us. Because, again, the not kind of students, the sophistication of special education law, and the needs of those students continue to increase. And that's where, that's the relief we need. We need some kind of relief to say, we recognize you should be rewarded for bringing students back. Could we fund districts and encourage them to bring students back into the home districts? That's, I have never heard that conversation, but maybe that's another conversation that can be had with legislators to say, you know what, districts should be recognized and rewarded for bringing those students back at some great risk to their budget to do that.
I think that there's another important point to add here, and that is that with all of the programs that we have brought back to district, we have not added a single special ed administrator to support those programs. It's all been supported with existing staff at the same levels that we were staffed at five years ago. And that's not saying that we didn't need them. We definitely need them. And a lot of that responsibility has fallen on the building principals who have no assistant principal to back them up. They're all still dealing with all of the Senate Bill 7 things, and now they're having special ed on top of that as well. So it's something definitely to keep in mind.
Mrs. Hirsch?
I think at this point, I believe our special ed population actually decreased. We're decreasing in terms of the total number of students that we have enrolled. If I go look back on 10 years' worth of data, our numbers went down. The thing that we hear again and again is that the needs of the students are increasing. And I think what would be helpful, sitting at the table and understanding the recommendations, and I think what would be helpful in the public discussion with the taxpayers of Elmhurst as well as with our legislators, is some evidence, some data about the different levels of offerings that we provide in 205. When I had my kids at Jefferson ages ago, there were no instructional classrooms. I thought the instructional classrooms at Jefferson, K 2 and 3 5, were supporting all the students in the district. Every time I turn around, there's a new instructional classroom being added at a different building. This is really the first time I've heard somebody from the administration saying, you know, we'd like to have these instructional programs at each elementary building. I don't think that we ever had that discussion at the board table. I'm not saying that we should or shouldn't. And I'm not saying that we should be making decisions for you in terms of what the program delivery should look like. But I think we need better data on, and I realize it's a sensitive area because of privacy issues, however, I think we need better data on the dispersment, the scattergram, you know, how many kids do we have?
The number of students with specific disabling conditions. We can get that for you pretty easily.
I don't, it's not with disabling conditions, it's programming. How are we delivering the programming? How many autism classrooms at what grade levels are we offering? How many self-contained classrooms do we have, and what has that enrollment done over the last five years? How many instructional classrooms? I'm going to guess that board members don't even know the different definitions of the different types of programs that we offer. An instructional classroom, self-contained classroom, those kids are in that classroom all day with special ed certified teachers and are receiving, and people are coming to them to give them services. And I know that we have them, I believe at Sandberg, I believe we have them at Hawthorne. I don't even know what buildings we have them at.
Which program are you referring to?
A self-contained classroom. My point is not so much that I need you to answer and tell me which buildings we have self-contained classrooms, but I think the point is, as much as we look at Casar's data in terms of trying to project overall enrollment in the district, I think we have data and we need better access to that information to understand because there are rules. You have a 70/30 ratio. You can't have more than 30% kids with an IEP in a gen ed classroom at York. And the legislature right now is debating that and talking about easing up on those restrictions. But we, because we don't have the data on how many kids we have, we can't make that argument. We can't encourage loosening or tightening of those specific kinds of things. I think we need to know how many instructional classrooms we have. We have to understand, and as board members, we should all understand, that kids in an instructional classroom in K 2 and 3 5 are pushed into a gen ed classroom some percentage of the day and are interacting with their gen ed counterparts. I think there's a lot of data that we have that board members can't touch and feel. And I think that that evidence and that data and looking over trends so we can understand how many kids we have in self-contained classrooms and what that number has done and how many we brought in from a private placement. Because most of them aren't private placements, right? Most of them in the instructional classroom were never really candidates to be placed out. Is that-
That would, that would not be correct, no.
Okay.
A lot of the students who are in instructional, they are either coming out of or possibly on their- on their way to an outplacement.
Okay.
It's the next step before an outplacement.
So, there you go, kind of informed board member, don't know. I think the point is that we need to have evidence, we need to have data, we need to better understand how many classrooms, and it's really no different than how many third grade sections do we have, how many instructional classrooms do we have that are covering K-2, how many instructional classes that are covering 3-5, how many self-contained, how many are dedicated to autism. I think that's data that we need, we all should have access to, and it's something that we should be tracking. If we're going to try to predict what staffing needs are going to be, we can look back over the last 10 years, and what were the results, what have we been experiencing in Elmhurst in that different programming model. I think that's something that the board should get.
Mrs. Ebner.
Going back to what you were talking with our legislators, I think it would be helpful to show our legislators, as we're meeting with them, you know, I have the meeting scheduled end of April, with one of our representatives, is to show that, is it true that the special education percent is about 13 percent?
We're right about the state average, which is between 13 and 14 percent.
Okay, and has it stayed about 13 percent?
That's correct.
Okay, so I think it would be important to show, we have a, you know, some pretty much constant level of special ed, but show how the funding that goes into that constant 13 percent is just really going up, you know, stepping up. And it's just to show our legislators, they don't know this. They don't know what we're, you know, spending for that subset, and that's just escalating each year.
The issues that you're talking about, Shannon, too, it's counting numbers of students, it's not counting, and this is some of the information that we'd be happy to provide for you guys, it's not just the number of students, it's the service delivery minutes.
But I think for legislators, if they see that it's a, well, this is how much you have, they don't understand what we have to provide.
Right, we're just like any other district who happens to have 14 percent of their population, but if we have students with autism, or other significantly disabling conditions, their service delivery minutes are significantly different.
Mr. Blum.
From a legislative engagement standpoint, I think we were talking, you talked about funding and making the case for the state that we're, you know, we're providing a service and asking for some help. The other question I would have to you, Meg, is, are there things that, I mean, this is about outcomes. I mean, it isn't about how much money we put at it, you know, ultimately, it's about what's best for our kids, and are there things that the legislature has done that tie our hands, that you need relief under, that you see a better way to do it, to produce outcomes, to produce what's best for our kids, that you just can't do because the law is written in such a way that you're mandated to go in this direction, even if you think that this direction might be a little bit better? And you don't have to answer that now, but that would be something helpful from a legislative engagement standpoint, not just funding, but also, you know, operational relief, so that we're able to do some of the things that maybe we think we can do better, maybe a different way. So, I would ask for that.
One of the things that comes to mind immediately is that the law requires that we provide the students their education in the least restrictive environment. And the least restrictive environment, for some students, is going to be a therapeutic day school. For some students, it's going to be push-in services from a resource teacher in their general education classroom. For some students, it's going to be that they have to have an assistant with them all day. So, the number of variations is as long as you could possibly think, and we have a very educated public who absolutely knows their rights. So, we need to have the flexibility to be able to say, you know what, sometimes the least restrictive environment is going to look totally different from one student to the next. And we have to be able to make those decisions at the IEP table without feeling like there's going to be issues for us when we make what's perceived to be the wrong decision financially, because it was made in the best interest of the student within the law.
Okay, so I think as we put this together, touching base with you on being able to describe these things right, as we talk to our legislators and asking them for help, it would be helpful to have those items, so we'll come back.
Mr. McDonough.
This data, for purposes of informing the public, is exactly what I mentioned to you before the meeting, we're trying to assemble this story to tell our taxpayers, constituents, what's going on with the district. So, if you can provide some of those facts, some of that data that allow us to tell a full story to them. We're doing this communications pieces right in the Policy and Board Improvement Committee. Obviously, we're asking for it now, and it'll take you a few days, or whatever it takes. We'd appreciate it to plug it into that piece, because I think it's a powerful part of the story, so.
I just want to make sure that I have exactly what it is that you are looking for. I mean, we can get you the information that you need. The information that Maria requested is how many self-contained programs we have, and at what levels. My perception is, is that you probably need to know how many students, what our percentage is, and then the number of service delivery minutes per teacher.
I think our goal is more to document for the public the changes, and how that's put pressure on, financial pressure on the district.
So, to see perhaps what the increases over time.
That probably is something different than Maria's asking for, mine is a little more narrow in this communications piece.
I think it's historical in nature.
Exactly.
To understand trends, for the purposes of planning, long-term budgeting, but it's not just self-contained, it's really, special ed is the whole thing that we feel as though we have no understanding of, and there's no, whatever the state says, we write the check. There's no, so I think that's part of.
The raw numbers help people get their hands around it, or arms around it, who aren't particularly involved in a special ed situation. That helps, but it's the historical change that helps tell the story about what it has done to, you know, the district's resources in doing the right thing, so.
John, why don't we, the Board Improvement Committee meet tomorrow, and we need to give Meg some better direction, okay? So, maybe we can focus more, and then hand something to her after our committee meeting, or, you know, however, I think we need to, it's kind of nebulous right now? Okay.
I think that's probably the most efficient use of the board's time, is to do it in committee and work with Meg to just be clear about what the board's requesting.
I'd like to finish up with Dr. Johnson's in the ELL program, so.
Thank you. With more data that has come available since January, there's only been a shift in the proposed allocation. Now, instead of needing 1.1 FTE at the elementary, we're at 1.2, based on some, really knowing where these students were grade level, and with additional granularity in our data, we know that we only need .9 at the middle school, so we still need 2.1, it's just a minor shift. As I said in January, there's a greater number of ELL students in the lower grade levels. We're also filling out or building out our programs for schools that are starting to see minor shifts in their demographics. That's it.
Anything else? Yeah, on behalf of the board, I realize that this was in our packet a month or more ago, two months ago, to be exact. And so, I just want to express our appreciation for letting us dredge this back up, because I think we just needed a presentation to be a little bit more oral and visual learners than read it in our packet. So, we appreciate the discussion. And particularly, Meg, I think we give you the least amount of time to explain to the board the great work that you've been doing. I mean, I, you know, while I can't quantify this, I can tell you that my impression is that in the four years you've been here, our parents' satisfaction with the services that have been delivered to their students has increased dramatically, and we appreciate that. And we appreciate hearing from you, and I think any continuing effort that we can have to educate the board on the challenges that your department faces, I think it's time well spent. So, thank you for the work you've done here, and the work you've done in our district the time you've been here. So, I think the board agree that this was helpful to us in terms of understanding the staffing, and as to why we need that staffing. So, with that, why don't we move on to our next subject?
Chris Welton would like to present to you a student fees recommendation for the coming school year.
We have the, this is the first reading on student fees, they will be up for approval on April 23rd. So, I wanted to start, we have, the fees are generally for instructional materials consumed in the classroom by students, and we have two different, when we're talking about textbook fees, the high school is on a different model than the pre-K through eighth grade textbooks. So, we assess the fees in two different ways. So, I'm going to start with the pre-K through eighth grade, and up on the screen now is the first grade fees, where we detail out all of the fees. And the textbooks have, in the past, been on a five-year cycle, so those actual textbook costs are spread or amortized over a five-year period. In grades one through five, let me make sure, or is it kindergarten through five, kindergarten through fifth, we had a new adoption in social studies this year. And for that, for the new adoptions, and it's this year, or next year, and future adoptions, we're going to change that to a six-year cycle. And that has curriculum benefits, but also has a benefit as far as spreading the fees over six years versus five years. So, those items are shaded in gray there, that are the new adoption for next year, and the one-sixth of the cost for the fees. So, the K through eight is really a rental process for textbooks, and then there are some items that are consumable in the year, which are annual fees. So, now, we, from this detailed list of materials, we go to a summarized version on page two here, where we take those fees, we average them, round them, we add to it the planner, the tech fee, the processing fee, the student accident insurance, to come up with our fees for next year. Where we're looking at an $8 increase at pre-K and kindergarten, one through five are increasing $17, and the sixth through eighth are increasing $2. But because of the timing of adoptions, these, at the pre-K through eight, with the cycles, there can be variations from one year, as certain adoptions fall off and new adoptions come on. So, in this case, the increases are because the new adoptions are, fees are, the cost of the new adoption is more than the ones that were falling off this year. So, if we go to the historical page, you'd notice that, on the last page, the, these fees are higher than last year, but they're not higher than fees that we've had in the past, because of the cycles that these fees vary from one year to the next. So, that's really the K through eight, and I'm going to move on to the York fees. And both sets of fees, we were trying to really stay, you know, to minimize any increases. And in the York fees, the only increase we have is the, a dollar increase to the student accident insurance from $5 to $6. We made no other changes at the high school level to the fees. We also provided onboard docs for you, a rationale for the technology fee, and a more thorough explanation, detailed explanation on the student accident insurance. That's all.
Are there any questions for Mr. Welton? None. One thing I would point out is the, the social studies curriculum, textbooks, and all the materials are right out in the hallway outside this room, and I would encourage anybody who's interested to come take a look at those. How long will they, how much longer will they be on display? Any idea?
Thirty days, the last quarter would be the statute.
Okay, all right, so they'll be there a little while longer, for anyone who wants to take a look at them. I, yeah, don't remember that date either, thank you. That's quite all right. Mr. Welton, thank you.
The other item on the agenda coming up is just planning for a budget update for the following school year. In addition to the presentation tonight on staffing, we are also going to have Dave Smith talk in detail about the technology piece of the assumptions that we talked about in January. So, at the next board meeting, Dave will go into detail about that plan, about how it's been, what the recommendations are for expenditures, where those expenditures are going. So, you'll have that at the next meeting. In addition to this, as we move ahead for staffing, if there are significant changes in staffing, we will update the board. And the caution is always, this is early in the process for staffing. There can be enrollment changes going, especially over the summer as new students enroll. As Brad mentioned, right now, our kindergarten numbers are significantly down from this time this year. Whether that's going to hold or not, we don't know, but we're staffing right now based on our present enrollment numbers that have registered for kindergarten. So, we may have less kindergarten sections, we could very well all of a sudden have an influx of parents who come in and register for kindergartners, and so that is another kind of wild card factor that we will be considering as we move forward. I don't have to tell the board that state funding is still in flux, there does not seem to be a firm number that's being thrown out there yet, so we will monitor that as closely as we can. As we get to June and July with the administrative team and into August, one of the things that we obviously have decided on this year is to maintain kind of a maintenance budget across the district for the coming school year. As a result of that, we'll be meeting with the administrative team for a significant number of days to talk about the effect of DPIs and our plans for strategic planning on DPIs going into this year, both the academic DPIs, as well as the Harris Poll satisfaction DPIs on both sets. We'll come back in August and report back to the board on what those strategic plans are, given that we can allocate additional resources for that, but that doesn't mean we can't still move forward on some of those DPIs. But we'll want to detail with the board what those are, what our tentative plans are going into the 13, 14 school year, and how we're going to roll those out to the rest of the staff and engaged staff in those discussions on strategic plans for improvement. So, that will be over the summer, and again, we'll report back to the board in August. So, with that, any other questions on the budget development?
Okay, that's right. Hearing none, then let's move on. The next item on our agenda, I'm sorry, is the approval of the February 26, 2013 board meeting minutes. Does anyone have any changes to those minutes? Hearing none, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Ebner. Mrs. Ebner.
Page 13 out of 14. It's at the very bottom of the page, the last sentence before the voice vote. I would like to delete that sentence. I'm not sure exactly what that meant. We will know if this is successful once we have the PRC assessments. So if I could delete that sentence, I was giving an update or talking about the new social studies curriculum adoption. Is that okay, Ellen? Did you get that? Okay. That's it.
Anything else? Then, given the one-sentence deletion, we'll let those minutes stand as modified by Mrs. Ebner. Next is committee reports. The Board Improvement and Policy Committee.
I'll begin with policies, and there were two policies that we discussed. One was donations to the district. It was specifically on Hawthorne, they had, we were looking at, you know, equity of donations across the district. And we, as we went into that meeting, found out that all, all the PTA wanted to do is replace a longstanding, previously PTA donation. So they were just renewing it, so that everyone understands what that discussion was. The second policy was about stadium use, and it was, we have the York Community Advisory Committee had presented, first off, they congratulated us for working with them around the York Stadium and the issues that they had. And, and so they were presenting to our committee a policy that they would like to include in our District 205 policy. So that's going to be presented to the board at a future time. We got a few iterations of it, and we just wanted to ensure that the version that they want to include in our policy, you know, that, that committee truly, in fact, you know, agreed with what was being presented to us. So we're going to revisit that one, but just some background around it. And then we moved into Board Improvement. We talked about new board member orientation, because we wanted to make sure that we bring new board members onboard seamlessly and bring them up to speed as quickly as we can. So what we had, we really looked at it, the IASB, as a framework. And the IASB actually, for their spring meeting, had started to do a candidate, a board briefing for candidates. So we think that that's a really good thing for us to recommend for future years, if we have board members that are candidates, that they can, it's a free training awareness that IASB provides, and we would recommend that they attend it as the first step. Secondly, there's IASB, very in-depth new board member orientation process, and with a series of meetings and specific agenda, agendas that are put together that really do cover a lot of the, the main areas of responsibility. And so we thought that our superintendent, Mr. Prunow, said that he, in previous districts, would meet with new board members with the board president. And so we'd, we'd recommend that that would be our process. And then that we would recommend, and it's actually mandatory, that any new board member participate in the IASB boot camp. And then lastly, what we had put together is team-building retreats in the summertime, and that what we could do is prepare new board members for those team-building retreats. And that would include committee review, review of each of the committees and, and what has happened previously on the committees and moving forward. Secondly, Board Harris Poll survey results. We know that the board, the Performance Management Committee is really spearheading the performance indicators, the DPIs. But we, as a Board Improvement Committee, are responsible for putting together, meeting, improving our results as they relate to questions that are asked to the parents as well as staff and employees with regard to board, the Board of Education. So we're looking at it from two perspectives. One, again, it's employees and staff response, and then secondly, community or parents. And what, our first step, and what we're going to be doing tomorrow night, is reviewing questions to prepare for our focus groups. So it really says, you know, what are the questions that we can get to the root cause of the issues on some areas that need improvement? This, okay, so that's the Harris Poll survey results and where we are, and we'll be working on it tomorrow night. And then we just went through various different Board Improvement updates. One legislative engagement, and what we had decided is that, that we would focus on state legislators. We have met with one legislator so far, and we have four other legislators coming up in April, hence the questions to the administration. And then we also are looking at community engagement, and we've discussed that already this evening, and looking at, as we continue our discussions about providing the best education for all of our students, how do we do that given the realities of today? And as Mr. McDonough said, the economic realities. But it's also the increasing needs of our students, as you heard in tonight's discussion. So it's, it's not simple. It's complex, and it's integrated, if you will, and we're trying to make it as simple as we can so that more people understand it and understand what the challenges truly are that we face, so that we can gain some more discussions at the community level and ensure that we are representing the community's values. And we have our meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you. Next is the Curriculum and Instruction Committee. Mrs. Ebner.
We started the meeting talking about our English language learners. We held the forum on February 26 and talked about next steps coming out of that forum. And it was decided that the Karen Military will start a six-to-month study of similar, I guess it's, to me, it sounds similar to the social studies curriculum adoption, where a large group of stakeholders, various stakeholders, will come together, you know, staff administrators, English and Spanish parents, and, you know, a lot of different stakeholders come together to a six, six-to-nine-month study and talk about the, in different implications, or discuss implications of different ELL models, possibly do a book study, communicate with other districts that have gone through this process, and hopefully that can be done in, about, by the end of the year. And for STEM, we had a nice STEM update from Mrs. Wilkie, Kathleen Wilkie. She has a lot going on with STEM. And I'm just going to name a few things. She gave us a presentation about STEM updates, so bear with me, there's, there's a few of them. But I think it's important to go through this, to show the progress that is being made with science, technology, engineering, and math. We spent a significant amount of time talking about TIF, so I think we can spend a significant amount of time talking about student achievement and how we do that with, you know, with STEM. So there's some science program updates. There, the next-generation science standards have been adopted by the state this spring, and the district will work on implementing those next-generation science standards. There's also a new implementation of a chemistry, of the chemistry program at York. A year or two ago, we talked about more students taking geometry as a freshman, or almost a 50% of freshman students taking geometry. The math Common Core State Standards in grades two through eight have been implemented. Engineering has been added to science in grades four through eight, and many of the labs, engineering principles, that's grades four through eight. And then also, engineering principles were added to our middle school math classes. I'm not going to go into detail with those. Also, industrial tech at the middle school in sixth and seventh grade, industrial tech curriculum, engineering principles have been added to that also. So I was, I didn't know that before committee meeting. And then just about our NOVA devices, we talked about this in the fall. The District 205 Foundation has raised enough funds for each middle school to have an additional cart of NOVA devices, which is 16 devices per cart. So one, one cart per building will be added from, from their funds that they've raised this year. And a future STEM vision. We like having forums, so there's going to be a STEM forum, and more information will come on that. And then the other, the other thing too, the last thing I want to say about it is, departments need collaboration time to talk about STEM initiatives and cross-pollinate, so that's another next step. Okay. Thank you for bearing with me on that one. I thought it was important, because there's been a lot of good work going on. The rest of this will go very fast. Dr. Johns talked about a proposal for administrative proposals, and maybe you just want to say a word about this. My understanding is it's really aligning proposals in our district.
Well, it's an outgrowth of what the Board Improvement Committee had suggested that we, I believe it was the Board Improvement Committee had suggested we adopt, where we take a more encompassing look at financial implications. So, for example, in a textbook adoption, we look at more than just the cost of the textbook, but actual cost of development and implementation. We look at risk factors. And so we are starting to take those concepts or those questions and start to fold those into our various proposal forms, whether it be for textbook adoption, summer workshops, and then we've created, we've essentially taken that and a project management template and merged them together for more generic, for a generic application to cover those
National Student Clearinghouse student tracker data has been mentioned before. It's very valuable information about what happens to our students after they leave York. And this will be addressed in the summer with high school staff, and we'll come together in the summer at a curriculum committee meeting and, and talk about that data and how to use it moving forward. That was it. There was the Institute Day on March 1st, and Mr. Prunow said it was very, very positive about student engagement.
Curriculum, I'm sorry, the Finance and Operations is next.
All right. At our Finance and Operations Committee meeting, first topic, February monthly financial reports. We are on plan, on budget, unless Chris corrects me, I'm saying something wrong, but I think we're, we're right on plan from a budget perspective. The second thing that had come up was Lakeview is our busing company. There's a contractual dispute, there was a contractual dispute with them. We're in the process of negotiating an agreement. Chris will provide more detail around what that is at the time when it's, when it's finalized. It's not, I don't consider it a material event, but it was, it was something he brought to our attention. Next on us, Bensonville Public Hearing and Joint Review Board TIF. God knows we don't want to talk about another TIF, but this was an old TIF. This was a TIF where there had been an intergovernmental agreement, everything had been approved, they had come back, and I guess the development hadn't happened, and they wanted them, and their plan to allow a different type of development. This is, this is the area over off of Grand Avenue that used to be a waste dump where, where that golf course was. It's not something that, that there's really anything for us to do on, but, so, not to get anybody disturbed about us going down another TIF alley. Let's see, we covered student accident insurance. Now, if this will scroll. So, status updates, Dave has already updated us on the status updates. Let me skip this next one. Student fees, we talked about general state aid. Chris had talked to us about the formula. I think the debate right now is, is whether the proration rate is somewhere between, I think last year it was 87%, this year the debate is somewhere closer to 82, I think, which is ugly, but we're waiting to see what happens from Springfield on that. And then from the long-term budget, the 15 and beyond, I just want to make sure that we keep that on the agenda at every meeting, as we talked about. There are a few parallel tracks that are, that are running. I think as we heard John talk about earlier, the Board Improvement Committee is working on the current state. You guys are going to discuss that tomorrow night. If you could give us an update on that at the, at the next meeting, I won't put you on the spot now. The administrative, administration continues to work on the alternatives on the operating side. And then within the Finance Committee, the long-term facilities plan is, is the item that we took. I think that we are, we are in the process of identifying the steps that we need to go down towards formulating alternatives, similar to what Dave and his administration are doing on the operating side. And we would hope to have something a little more clear to talk about after the next Finance Committee meeting. And that's it.
Thank you. The next is the Superintendent's Consent Agenda. Let me just quickly run through what is on that agenda. The first is the Monthly Personnel Report, followed by the Monthly Personnel, the Monthly Financial Reports, the approval to begin the fiscal year 14 budget process, the approval of the intergovernmental agreement that we discussed earlier on, and then several donations that I just want to take a minute to point out. The first is the district, our, our own District 205 Foundation is awarding its annual themes grants. Dr. Russell, the themes grants are a permanent memorial to Dr. Russell Themes, who's a former superintendent in District 205. And just to highlight them, about $12,000 going into category of technology, about $7,000 going to English and literacy, about $4,000 going to science, about $3,500 classified as multidisciplinary, and about $1,000 going to math education within the district. And we thank the District 205 Foundation, their board members, and their tireless efforts that they, the energy that they expend to raise this money so that they can distribute it for the betterment of the education of all of our kids. Item F is also the donation from our District 205 Foundation, and this is approximately $23,000 to purchase the NOVA 5,000 carts that Mrs. Ebner spoke of earlier, one for each middle school. Item G is a donation to Conrad Fisher School. Mrs. Mary Ann Wagner of Bend, Oregon, who I understand is a friend of one of the staff members at Conrad Fisher, but all the way from Bend, Oregon, a while ago, she saw a Chicago Tribune article related to the improvement of student achievement at Conrad Fisher School. So she generously donated about $500 a month for a six-month period, for a total donation of about $3,000. She's coming back to donate an additional $1,000 to be used as the principal, Jane Bailey, sees fit. So, Mrs. Wagner, thank you very, very much. The next, item H is an approval of a donation to Jackson School. Erwin Steinhebel &amp; Sons, which is an Elmhurst-based landscaping company, has generously, generously offered to donate labor and materials to help create a new landscaping design, which will complement the soon-to-be-constructed outdoor classroom on the grounds of Jackson Elementary School. And I am assuming that this is surrounding Jackson's 60th anniversary celebration this year. And that, the amount of that donation is approximately $16,000. So, Mr. Steinhebel, thank you very, very much. The next item is item I, for the district to purchase a nine-passenger van to be used in our special education programs transition center. That dollar amount is approximately $32,000 for that van. Item J is the approval of a bid to buy a wheelchair minivan for the special ed program at the transition center. That expenditure is approximately $31,000. And finally, item K is approval to renew our membership in the Illinois High School Association. So that is the consent agenda. Does anyone want any of those items removed? Does anyone want any of those items removed? Not hearing anything, then I'll accept a motion. Mrs. Hirsch.
I move that we approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda, items A through K. Thank you.
A second.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mrs. D'Erone to approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda, items A through K. Since we're spending money, we need a roll call vote. Mrs. Walsh, thank you.
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Erone?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays. The Superintendent's Agenda passes as stands. Next is upcoming meetings, and I will point out that all of these meetings will occur in Room 217 of this building, with the exception of the Board of Education meeting that will meet in 215, 16, and 17, the three rooms we're presently in. Wednesday, March 20, is the Board Improvement and Policy Committee at 7:00 PM. Wednesday, April 3, is the Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting at 7:00 PM. Monday, April 8, is the Performance Management Committee meeting at 7:00 PM. And this following is the next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, has been moved from Tuesday, April 9, to Wednesday, April 10. And that meeting will start at 7:30 PM. And then finally, on Tuesday, April 16, the Finance and Operations Committee will meet at 6:30 PM. The next is Board Communications. Is there anything from board members? Mrs. Stufen.
I know that I sent, I sent the board members Lend updates, but I just wanted to make sure, in case you didn't catch, this piece that was in from our executive director, Peg Agnos of Lend. She's sponsoring two lobby days, one April 10, although we have a board meeting that night, and then May 1. So we'll be going to Springfield. So if anyone's interested, let me know, and I can let Peg know.
Thank you. We could put a little board committee to make that field trip, that would be great, who's ever interested in going. Please see Mrs. Stufen. All right. That completes our agenda. Hearing no other items, I get to declare that this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.